Let us begin to the by of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, please call roll.
DeYoung.
Here.
Bakovin.
Here.
Randor Horst.
Here.
Dan Straylin.
Here.
Eba.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Very good. I would like to announce that there will be a policy and planning meeting following the regular council meeting to discuss the premier road improvements and bike trail, and also the city council procedural review. I'd like to move on to the approval of the tentative agenda. Do I hear motion for approval?
She's on.
Ben Straylin?
Support.
Porte Skibout, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no, then call roll.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Randor Horst?
Yes.
Motion carried. I would also like to welcome our newest member at our official capacity to the city council, Miss Randor Horst, casting her first official ballot. Very good, and welcome.
Thank you.
Now is time for the public forum. If there is anyone in attendance who would like to address any agenda items, please feel free to step up to the microphone, state your name, where you're from, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing no takers? I have to admit, I'm not used to seeing this many people in the audience. I'm not used to having people in the front row. That's great.
It's warm in here.
Yeah, it's warm in here.
All right, very good. We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear motion for approval?
Move.
DeYoung and Port Peterson, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no, then call roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Randor Horst?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Eba?
Yes.
Motion carried. On the public hearing, the number 1A, a public hearing on rezoning application by Boss Ridge LLC. Mike, if you can explain?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board of the brief proposal and presentation we decided. This mayor said the purpose of this evening's public hearing is to discuss a rezoning request which was submitted by Boss Ridge LLC. This particular request includes this 032 acres. The rezoning request that we are considering this evening is from A1 Agriculture, do single-family residential subdivision of R1. Now, the purpose of this rezoning request is to support development of the single-family residential subdivision, and it supports the amount that currently these properties are being used for agricultural purposes. Now, the highlighted area that we have here, I think, is a property, not last P-15, kind of low P-15, just north of Boss Lawn in July, and there it's in this green, possible area that we have on the big board as well, will be acquired here soon. So, let's go ahead, please. And when we talk about the rezoning request, in particular, the existing zoning for these parcels is A1 Agro-Pal Drilling, and the zoning district supports agro-pal sole purposes in the area. And this as well. Now, the proposed rezoning is to single-family residential or low-density residential, and this is the city zoning process. It supports low-density residential neighborhood. So, let's go ahead, please, for it. Now, as part of the rezoning process, what the city code down there mentioned is how to use the zoning petition for property owners within 300 feet of the proposed rezoning. However, this is a voluntary for the staff, a voluntary petition, and it shall not constitute a true role purpose as well. It's strictly a voluntary. Now, the staff uses the rezoning petitions. When we do receive rezoning petitions, particularly for those requests that do not align with the city's comprehensive plan, we deal, and as far as the impact of petitions, to see if there are no potential man use conflicts, and that's how we view this rezoning petitions. In this particular case, a rezoning petition is not received with the application. It's important to note during our review, staff does not believe there are any spot zoning concerns associated with this request, and that's due to the fact that these parcels are adjacent in close proximity to the Boss Lawn and residential subdivision. So, let's go ahead, please, for it. Now, as far as the parcels that we had here, right here on the map, and we talked about the comp plan, and once again, the rezoning parcels that we have right up here are within these green highlighted areas right up here. This parcel will be right here. P-15 is right here. Boss Lawn and July is right here. As far as the city's comprehensive plan is concerned, it does identify these parcels as low-density residential use. And so, from staff's standpoint, we believe that this rezoning request aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. So, let's go ahead, please, for it. As we said, we believe it's very important to technically consider the rezoning request, consider the comprehensive plan. We believe this particular request aligns with the city's comprehensive plan to feature use land map, the comprehensive plan. It also aligns with the key priority goals of the comprehensive plan, which is how the ones mentioned is a priority goal for the comprehensive plan. So, once again, we believe this request is in line with the city's comprehensive plan. And is based on this, and based on our review of no spot zoning concerns in close proximity to the Boss Lawn and subdivision, we are recommending approval of the request this evening. Finally, this fair and business, before we note, why the rezoning commission and state through this rezoning request in December 18th.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Any more written comments received?
Yes, three written comments were received, all of the council packet.
Do we need to... I'll vote this thing goes into the record. I probably wouldn't have her so much. Motion by Skibout to receive those comments into the record.
Support.
Support Bakovin. All in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no, then call roll.
Skibout?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Randor Horst?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes. Motion carried. We will receive those comments into the official record. Do we have any oral comments from the members of the council? Do you have any oral comments from the members of the audience regarding this issue? Again, please step forward, state your name, where you live, and keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Porte out? And Port, Ben Straylin, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no, then call roll.
Skibout?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Randor Horst?
Yes.
Onto item 1B, ordinance number 928, filed an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa, by amending the boundaries of the R1 district to include the properties legally described in Exhibit A, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and the date of this change on the official zoning map. This is the first reading. Mike, is there anything to add?
No, sir.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
Some.
Support.
Bakovin and DeYoung, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no, then call roll.
Bakovin?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randor Horst?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Move on to petitions and communications. Item number one, fiscal year 1819, funding request presentations, following in four entities will present their proposal. So, we will start. I'll turn it over to Mike to organize and run up the presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. The purpose of the presentation this evening is the city has received funding requests for fiscal year 2018, 2019. This will be a fiscal year starting on July 1st, 2018, and extending through June 30th, 2019. The purpose of tonight is to have these regional organizations present directly to the city council. Also gives the council an opportunity to ask any questions that they may have. As council is aware, when we do receive funding requests during our budget process, we normally speak to council funding requests in the city during our budget work sessions, which I believe are scheduled for February 12th and 15th of this year as well. So, tonight's purpose is to allow the groups to come and make the presentation directly to the city council, and also answer any questions that the council may have, and before we take it into consideration as part of our legislative system.
So, we are not expecting a decision made here tonight.
Strictly informational purposes was the intent of staff. Now, each of the parties tonight has been informed. They have 15 minutes for the presentation. We've also allotted five minutes in between each presentation, just to allow everyone to set up for parlay points in their presentation as well. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and turn the floor over to Pella Historical Society.
If you would just speak into the microphone, tell us who you are and where you live and...
Okay. I'm Valvin Coaten. I'm director of Pella Historical. I live just west of town, and I've been director for about a year and a half now. Pella Historical has been a fixture in Pella since 1935, and has been sponsoring Tulip Time for 83 years since 1935. And it's no surprise that many of the hotel motel income that comes, comes from things that Pella Historical does, including Tulip Time. During Tulip Time, probably close to 100% of the rooms in Pella, the week of Tulip Time are being used, being paid for because of Tulip Time. However, during the rest of the year, also, we have our five campuses. If you don't know, the Pella Historical has five campuses, the Vermeer Mill, the Interment Center, which is one historical village, is Scolty House, the Clock and Spell, and Amsterdam School. Our big event, of course, is Tulip Time, although we do have other ones throughout the year. You and I did a study a few years ago. The actual time brings in about $3.2 million to the community. The majority of that is going to retail, hotels, motels, restaurants, and about $750,000 of that is going to Pella's nonprofits that have stands up in the community or parking lots. Pella Historical, of that $3.2 million, I mean, it looks great. You might think, wow, they're bringing a lot of money. A good year at Pella Historical, a good Tulip Time brings in about 3% to 4% of that. We make between $90,000 and $140,000. A bad Tulip Time, a Snomageddon, you might bring in 1%. Seriously, we're still paying for 2014. We took, besides Tulip Time, you might say, well, yeah, Tulip Time is one thing, but we did a pretty exhaustive survey, and it's all more detailed in the handouts that you should have. We had asked everybody who came through our doors between Memorial Day and the end of August of this past year, where are you staying? What are you doing? And 42% of the people who came in, and this was 7,518 people who came in, paid admission or were members, 42% were staying in local hotels, motels. 23% were just into the day. 22% were staying with family, friends, or camping, and 13% were locals who were already here. So, we were really, it confirmed what we thought, that people are staying because they're maybe not coming because of Pella Historical, but they're coming to Pella Historical. They're staying here. They're visiting our site. We are asking for that, a very small percentage of that. We're asking for 12% of the hotel motel tax revenue for the upcoming year to help us continue to help the community. We know people rely on us. We know groups rely on us to make their money for the year. We know stores and hotels and motels and restaurants are relying on Tulip Time and other things in the community, and we ask for a very small percentage of that. This would include the $5,000 that the city already gives us for Tulip Ball, for Scolty House. So, that would not be a separate ask. It would be included in this 12%. And I don't worry about that. So, do you have questions or anything that you'd like to add?
How long has that $5,000 been in effect?
The earliest records I can find are from 1980, and it's always been $5,000.
Okay. Nothing that the city funded behind that?
In addition to the five?
No, before the 1980s.
Not that I can find any records of, doesn't mean it wasn't happening. I don't know.
Thank you.
Of the stands around town during Tulip Time, do they make contribution to the Historical Society?
Yes, and that's where the majority of our 3% to 4% comes from. Nonprofit stand makes a contribution of 10%. If they are a brick and mortar business that has a separate place, like, for instance, Happy Joe's, that has one out on the street, they make a 12%. However, not everybody does. We can't force it. There are groups that do not pay. Most do. Most do, but there are a few that don't. Yeah. The other things that we make money from at Tulip Time are the bleacher seating, the rotary wagons, the inflatables in the park. Those are our things, and those stands. That's where we make our money at Tulip Time.
And is it accurate that we don't charge back, right, any of the other expense that the city incurs? Water, and the troughs, and trash pickup, and all that other stuff, right? We do that as part of the contribution.
We absorb a lot of those fees.
Yeah.
We also spend quite a bit on Tulips, I believe, too. The Historical Society used to pay for those, the ones on the beds and the...
The quarters?
Yeah.
We, I don't think we've ever paid for them. The garden club might have at one time, but we have not.
I think we've expanded the number of, you know, number of beds that we're doing now.
Yeah. Nearly taken over the volunteering of planting those bulbs, but we've always paid for them. I've known Historical always got a piece of the nonprofit thing. I've always wondered if that percentage is gross or net?
It's supposed to be of their gross.
Never knew that.
Yeah.
Val, how did you come up with the number 12%?
Well, good question. We looked around at some of the other places around that are doing something similar. Holland, Michigan, has a similar arrangement. They wouldn't tell us an exact number, but we think it's somewhere in that ballpark that they're getting of their hotel motel tax for Holland, the Tulip Time Festival there. We looked at places like the Rose Festival, who get all of the hotel motel tax the week of the Rose Festival, just the one, just that week. We looked at places that get higher than that, they get less than this. We felt 12% was a fair, kind of in the ballpark figure.
So, Michael, can you tell me what past history was? Do you know a copy of that or Cory, what our intake was, hotel motel tax last year? I'd like some real numbers rather than percentages.
I believe it was between $350,000 and $400,000 a year annually.
$400,000?
At the top, yes. I fluctuate, but...
And 60% goes to...
Currently, the CBB is.
Thank you.
So, what would you do with the extra $40,000?
What we would do is, we would hire a marketing person. We need a marketing person. Right now, I'm trying to do marketing with everything else, and it's getting short shrift. We need a part-time marketing person. We'd like to hire an accountant, sort of a two-day-a-week, two-days-a-week person. We'd like to upgrade our advertising, do more advertising. We've had to cut back on our advertising budget the last couple of years because of some of the poor Tulip Times we had a few years ago. Those things kind of take a while to come through the pipeline as deficiencies, and so we want to up our advertising as well. None of this would, this would be operations. None of this would go for campaigns that we're doing. It would just be keeping our 25 historic buildings advertised, marketed, and in good shape.
Val, would you do any research into how those funds can be spent? Because I know that the state government is quite concise on how this 7% can be spent, and I know that it has to be divided in half, and that half has to go to county, and half goes to the city. And then of that other half, they're very precise in how you can spend it, and I have a bit of concern, just this is concern, and I'll be willing to look into this, or have the attorney look into this, when I hear the word salary. Because you and I, as grant writers, know that there are a lot of times when you're talking about state and federal funding, that there is a black hole, and that, I just want you to be sure, and I want to be sure with the vote, that if that is indeed the purpose of these funds, that it is a legal move on your part or on our part?
Yes. I talked to Nicole Shala at the state, and the money has to go for things that will bring people in for overnight stays. And so, she said, if we're marketing, using it for marketing, that that would be an acceptable advertising, marketing, even a marketing position. We could justify that. And that was her interpretation. Now, we would have to probably look further into that, but, yeah, it is a very strict, strict thing.
Yeah, scary, yeah.
As we've talked about, that percentage of what CBB gets versus a number of percentage. Jill, do you know off the top of your head what you spend? I know you guys at CBB spend some money focused on Historical Society. Do you have an idea what that is?
Right. I have advertising, our semi, our website, trade shows that we do, commercials that we run, all focused and include the Vermeer Mill within that advertising and marketing. Last year totaling over $71,000.
So, I bring that up just so that as we think about that conversation that's going to come in February, we're hearing about that percentage versus a fixed number, that there's other dollars coming from other places for the greater good, right? So, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do the 12%. I'm just bringing up the...
Right.
Yeah.
In addition to her $71,000, we have $30,000 allocated for Tulip Time. That goes to our Tulip Time marketing. We have another $15,000 that is my budget, so to speak, for advertising everything. That's Maria's Tea Room, that's Scolty House, that's Amsterdam School. That's everything else included besides just Tulip Time and the Mill.
Takes a lot of money.
It does take a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Are you ready for me? Hi, Kristy, nice to meet you. And I and my family live in Pella, and as maybe you know, we own and operate Pho Potts Bakery downtown in Pella. And the reason that I'm here today is from the very beginning, we've had customers, both local customers and out-of-town visitors, that from day one started to express a desire for a dog park. And I've heard it enough times that I finally thought, hmm, there's something to this. People really want a dog park. And so, I had the opportunity, not long after, to meet a young lady named Alexa, and she has a dream for a dog park here in Pella, so I invited her to speak at our grand opening, which she did, and she shared her dream. And then shortly after that, we decided to do a little bit of more formal gauging of community interest. So, we set out some signup sheets, just for people to say if they were interested in a dog park, sign up your name, and write your email address. And so, we collected probably at this point, I know there are over 600 signatures in the last several months, and then we started asking if any of them would be interested in doing any hands-on volunteering. And so far, we have about 50 people that have indicated they would like to volunteer, doing anything from landscaping to design work to event planning. We've been really fortunate, landscaping, professional building even, legal work, accountant work, a lot of people just willing to be foot soldiers. And so, we just decided to go ahead and try to move forward and seek the city council's approval, maybe partner with the city in some capacity. So, at this point, I'd just like to introduce Lexi's dad, also known as Brian Gaylord, also known as boat home furnishings owner. And I'll turn it over to him right now.
Also known as the talking head. Okay. All right. Well, thank you guys for, if anything else, for listening to us on this. So, I'm just going to go through the statistics, and you'll get to see a little bit on what we have. So, 2010 to 2015, in America, we've had a 20% growth in off-leash dog parks. And so, it's one of the fastest-growing parks in the United States. The surveys that we've received from the new movers up on the downtown council, one of the things that we had dissected during that is that one of the big things that the new movers had asked for in the last four years is to have a dog park. Because as many of us know, we'll move into a community, and maybe younger, and not have kids. So, let's get an animal and see if we can keep the animal living, and then we can have kids. So, it's a readily processed. So, 30% of, 37% of the recent survey that was done in the Pella area, 300 people surveyed, did also ask for a dog park. So, that's an additional survey that was done through PACE. And our local veterinarians have over 8,000 dogs in their patient base. And like Kristy said, we have over 600 signatures. This is just one of the three packets that we have of people that say that they would definitely utilize a dog park. The local residents using the parks right now are, or that would use a park, is actually using empty lots with no control for waste management, and of course, there's a liability issue because there's no formalized program, no control. So, who would be affected by this dog park would be employers. That's one thing that we've heard also in the surveys that we've received, is employers want to have, they want to have higher recent graduates, and so, recent graduates want to be in a community that actually has a dog park and somewhere they can create a community. Established families with pets, elderly individuals with pets that can also exercise, we heard that from Oskaloosa Dog Park when we sat in one of their door meetings, that also creates a community within our community. That's something that we hear all over all these, we've been researching, is that it's not just a park that's functioning, it's actually how they can actually meet people, potential future spouses, and just friend networks. Then also, single individuals that are searching for that future mate through their path, of course. So, where would this be located? So, what we have looked at, four locations, and I believe we may have on the proposal, I know you each have their proposals, so very good to read, flipping through here. So, on your iPad, you should have that proposal that was sent to you, that Kristy had put together, that has great detail, and it would actually be page three of the proposal. And the three options that we had narrowed down to a four option, excuse me, was Roosevelt, which is across the street from the New Dairy Queen. So, it's a triangular, two-acre section. There's not a lot of ease of access or parking, and then it would be dangerous, as we deemed, with the traffic out there. The second option would be P Street, which is two acres, now it's old baseball diamonds, I believe it was a landfill years ago. Two acres, there is a water flow issue. Tim actually has coached there, Tim Exstras, and I don't think the neighbors downstream would like to have all those presence floating down that are in a dog park, that could be. And then there are neighbors surrounding that property. Parking would be an issue. Fields of Our Future, we had discussions with them. There is that spot in the very entry area, Fields of Our Future, up to eight acres. It is considerable distance from most of the neighborhoods in the community. Existing parking lot would be far away, so how could you have handicap access to cross the waterway, potential overload, traffic during those sporting events, and then it sounds like there may be some plans for housing. So, could that be too much of an overflow in the area? The last and best option that we came up with is the city-owned property on Truman Road, would be just east or west of the new Trick Tools building, between Trick Tools and Edings. That's 4.71 acres. It does have ease of access for driving, walking, the future bike path that's being proposed in the future, the proximity to that. Far enough away from neighborhoods, but yet close enough for access, and they would have parking there. Now, there is that public parking lot to the north, on the other side of the street, and then our future proposal. So, the screen, the comparisons that we've come up with, which you would see in your proposal, are Oskaloosa, Knoxville, Otomo, Bettendorf, Ankeny, and Indianola. And Jeanette Vaughn has actually been doing research on this and had input from people and requests, and I believe she showed Kristy a packet that was a couple inches thick on information. So, she's the one that actually helped compile that information. But again, we don't have time to go over all of them. You can see how each of the parks compare as far as who owns, how is it partnered, what are the fees, and so it just shows how that all compares together. So, what we are proposing, and what this would look like, as you can see from the screen here, I know you can zoom in better on your iPads, is that 4.71 acres would be made up with the amount of dogs and the amount of people that we have in Pella, and Pella being such a draw. 1.9 would be for the large and all-dog area. 0.72 would be for the small-dog area. So, that, the large is going to be on the left-hand side of the screen, and the small-dog area is going to be on the bottom-right side of the screen. And 0.19 is going to be for the tiny, old, and timid-dog area. So, that's going to be of the two small rectangles, it'd be the bottom-left one. And then you have 0.2 acres of training and agility, and that could even pertain into the police department if there were... into the police department if they were ever doing canine training, if that was ever come up. Uh, point seven nine would be for the rotation. And I apologize, the first one, the one point nine is the large areas on the right side. The biggest area on the left is gonna be that point seven nine for rotation. Because what we've seen in some of these other parks is when they don't have an area where they can let some of that grass grow back, it's too small for the population of dogs, it turns, turns it tend into a, turn into a mudlot. And so having that rotational area there, uh, would definitely be helpful. And the remaining point nine would be that center-top section with parking, uh, bike rack, double-gated entry, and sheltered restrooms. The fencing was actually, this whole thing was designed free of charge from Klinger. And they even put chambers on all of the corners there, just even for, uh, mowing, to where whoever would be upkeeping that wouldn't have to worry about the ninety-degree corners could be quick on the mowing with zero turns. And access points coming from the left of the parking lot and working your way down across those two small sections into the large right-hand section on the bottom right and back up to the top. So it could be a nice flow for double gates for ease of access, but not having exit points on the exterior for safety. Uh, the cost-wise, from Klinger and Associates, you should have on your reports there, you have how the cost is broken down. Uh, they did everything but the tree shrubs, aesthetic landscaping, entry signage, and message board. And, and that total was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand on that figure. And then ours is, of course, if you see on the next page of your proposal, there is an additional fifty thousand, because that adds in for those, all those trees, shrubs, and aesthetics. Uh, the revenue would be the following page after that on your report. And that's gonna show the, 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 just, we use simple examples of other parks that use dog fundraising. Again, we just gave the preliminary, or we feel our expenses are high. Our upfront costs are high because it doesn't take into consideration labor that would be donated. Uh, but also, uh, we have a lot of other amenities that we can use within the community. Plus fundraising as a five oh one C three would be, uh, definitely benefited for us at, working in, in partnership with the city. Uh, and one of the pages that you see should be the last one, and it should be a, a picture of an evergreen, or evergen solar light. And that's something that Klinger actually recommended because being green is definitely important where it actually are solar lights. And they are located, this doesn't have a full, correct? So there are lights actually in the center, right here, right there on the left and on the right there. So they actually will put out a printer, there, you can just barely see the outline. And so those three lights would actually supply even beyond what I believe there's a streetlight here and a streetlight over here. So at least from a safety standpoint, there would be enough lights there that would have zero electricity draw. And because of this not being something that needs a lot of underground subsurface work, it, it's, there's just very little elevation that need to be performed. As Christie said, Wes Chaplin has formed the association with us, donated his time. Wendy Sims, uh, with Screaming Unamark has filed for the five oh one C three, and has donated her time. Uh, we already have an executive board formed for the association. We have approximately forty committee members that are ready to go on wanting to help out. And then over fifty volunteers that are ready to help with labor. We even have a skillset, uh, uh, report on how people that wanted actually do help in whatever capacity. Uh, we do have a couple individuals here from Pella Corp and Vermeer that in their daily regiment, they, they work a lot with project management, and they would be willing to assist, is the key word, correct? Assist, yes, not do, but assist, uh, with the project management. And then they also would have the willingness and the ability to have, uh, some of their team members volunteer. So we've got, like Christie said, we have a lot of foot soldiers that are ready to help on something like this. Plus with the Vermeer, Vermeer connection, we do have where equipment always needs to be tested, and that'd be something that they would be willing to do also. Uh, and Christie also said we do have a local landscaper that would be willing to donate their labor for the landscaping. So in summary, uh, Jeanette's large folder was definitely another testimony on this. We know the demand is there, we know it's growing. Uh, and it does align with the initiatives, uh, of housing growth that, that the city is required, is, is requesting. And then also the downtown renovations on making our, our downtown more street-friendly. And, and with that, we'll also help with the dogs. And we just wanna be a vessel with the city to help partner with this and help out in whatever capacity we could.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a few. So my first question is, I mean, this is, this is cool. Um, but does it really need to be that big, starting out?
Yeah, almost five acres, that's quite a lot.
When you're asking for...
Why don't we try two acres and see how it goes? I mean, I'm looking at it budget-wise.
What we heard from a lot of the other dog parks was is that, that they started out with what they thought would work, and all, and all of a sudden, they had so much usage that they are turning into those mudlots. And then they didn't plan or budget for that.
Then let's expand. And, uh, I mean, that's a sizable chunk of money, too.
Yeah. And you can see the columns that we have, it has it to where, again, these are estimates, but from what the total is on the left-hand column, and then you can see city request, and then what we are...
Yeah, I'm gonna get to that in a second.
Okay.
Um, Jeanette, I assume you looked at the expenses, the yearly expenses versus the revenue? Is that in line with what you think? Or the expenses on here are ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars a year on only five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars of income? So, uh, I don't need to remind anybody of all the other gifts that we've been given in town that are costing us a fortune right now. And so I just, again, as I think about the size of this, I think it's an awesome idea. I just, it, we have a lot of gifts that cost a lot of maintenance. So, so I'm just curious if you think that's in line?
Gotta walk before we run.
I mean, it's, you know, I mean, it's hard to say, but I think, I think between all of us, we've done a fair amount of research. And, and the, and the one thing, um, that I do appreciate with this group is that they are willing to come with volunteers, and I think that would really, you know, that would really help in the end. Um, you know, if we're just spending some time out there mowing, um, you know, it might not be, it might not be as much for, for labor, um, if they're helping do something.
Well, the one thing, if you build the whole thing, getting rid of those notches inside, because that looks like a moor's nightmare to me. Have a straight fence.
And then my last question is, of the three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars of real money, do you have any of that raised yet?
We don't have any raised.
Okay, sure. All right.
We wanted to make sure that was just an actual possibility, and then we go forth with fundraising.
Okay, thank you.
I hate to pour water on your party, but I've had very bad experiences with dog parks. Granted, my experience has been in larger, larger cities. Havasu City, Arizona, and Phoenix. But had bad experiences with disease, with unruly dogs. But like I say, I've, I've had bad experiences with dog, dog parks. I picked up a newspaper in Otomo and just wish I'd saved the article. But they, you know, were, uh, discussing their problems with the Otomo Dog Park. So like I say, I, I'm not ready to, you know, lay out two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, you know, in a dog park to experience my personal experiences. So hate to come up with that negative attitude, but, uh, the last time I went to a dog park with, uh, my neighbors, uh, I'm with my nephew's, you know, dog in Havasu City, we had a very bad experience. And my former, uh, neighbor here in Pella, who, you know, is a real dog lover, uh, you know, is now in Phoenix. And he was really excited about their dog park. He no, no longer goes because the dog park that he was so excited about, he can't go to anymore. So I'm not big on dog parks. So I hate to give you that scenario, but, again, as, as I look at a project of this size, I do have concern about, you know, dog parks in other, um, you know, bigger cities and in Iowa cities.
Yeah, and that's one of our concerns as well, to be honest. And, um, that's part of the reason that this park is as large as it is because we have, and I'm learning too, from our customers, and I learn from people that come from states and cities that are very dog-friendly, like Colorado and out east, Washington, Oregon. And, um, they come here and are incredulous that we don't have anything like this. And there have been a few customers also that have had bad experiences. And I've talked to customers from Otomo specifically that have had bad experiences. So we, what we would like to do is do our research ahead of time and, um, do it well. So there have been other cities that have done proactive, uh, have taken proactive steps and have even brought in dog trainers that have worked with the community and people that plan to use that dog park. And of course, not everybody is going to follow certain guidelines, but you can try to take steps proactively to make it a safe, uh, place for dogs and their, and their, um, handlers. One of the things with the, the size of this dog park is with it including the five separate fields. Um, somebody that has a small dog, or that has a timid dog, or that has a greyhound, let's say, that is not really built to play well with other dogs, um, just because their skin is so thin, and sometimes it can tear very easily just in regular play. So to have a, a field for solo dogs, that's important for certain people. Or for people that have dogs that are tiny, old, or timid, that's important. And it, and it goes, um, you know, to the health and safety of the dogs and the handlers as well.
Chief? No, it's good. Do you have any experience with just regulation and, and keeping order at dog parks and things like that?
No experience whatsoever, other than as a citizen taking a dog to a park, but not on an official capacity.
I think it's a cool idea, and I'm, I'm, I'm for it. Um, I just, it's big. Holy cow, it's big. It's way bigger than I thought.
Question, you're, um, two hundred dogs at twenty-five dollars on the annual. So we're gonna charge an entrance fee for public property. What we found for these other dog parks, too, is that if there's no skin in the game for our dog owners, then it makes it easy for them to abuse the place where at least you could have, um, where membership tends to have people where then there's a registration that has to go with that. And that can tie back to, are they getting their shots? Are they getting, getting tracked back? And even Derek at Hy-Vee said that he'd be more than willing to have where people could register there for ease of access.
Are there, are there examples of other dog parks that do that kind of thing? And, and I'm only, I'm asking, I need to get a lot smarter on this whole process. And that is, is if tax revenues, city tax revenues are gonna fund this, I guess I got a little bit of heartburn of charging people to use it so much than to charge another twenty-five dollars. If I'm paying my property taxes, why do I get to pay another twenty-five dollars to go use a city park?
What I've been reading about it is, um, in some communities, they charge, you license your dog, and then that gives whomever is governing it the opportunity to make sure that the vaccines are updated and these kind of things, and that money goes back into maintaining it and...
Makes it, makes sense. I'm just, I'm trying to not step on the landline somewhere along the way.
We'd have to have earned an advisement of what's the best way to do it where you're not discriminating yet.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. And I think the liability issue is something, too, that we really need to be cautious of and have our eyes wide open going in because we all know that dogs don't always play well together. And there are some dogs that don't play at all. Um, and you can't legislate, uh, good judgment by dog owners and subsequently by the dogs that are at the park. So, um, I just see that as a potential issue of, you know, somebody's dog getting aggressive with somebody else's dog, and, and who's liable for it? And what do you deal, how do you deal with that? So, I mean, I, I'm in Tony's camp, I love the idea of a dog park. I got three of them. So, I mean, I love dogs, I love animals, and, and all those things. So, we'll, we'll know a lot more as we dig into this further, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
February.
It's coming. Quick question, Jeanette. The proposed parcel, who, who knows that at present?
Um, I think...
We actually sell, sell the payoff of it twice a year in round bales.
Okay.
So it's been getting mowed two to three times a year now. We mow about ten feet on the right away, and then they bear the rest.
Our director would be here to make the presentation, Jennifer Van Kote. She had surgery, uh, late last week, so she, she figured with two of us, we might be able to cover for her. So we have, um, I'm Bob Zalst, and we got Bruce Deportio here, and Bruce is gonna kick it off.
Right, we could talk a little bit about the learning walkway that was reperated at Southern Gardens Park. Okay, so this is what we're looking at. Uh, Spark Pella Trust has proposed a development of a learning walkway. We'll focus on early history of Pella. The learning walkway would link two Pella landmarks, the Tubble Cabin and Sunken Gardens Park, using an existing city-owned alleyway. And the development of this project would be done in collaboration with the city of Pella. So, uh, goal, it, it would be to create an educational experience using signage, instructional castles, and landscaping to offer historical insights and information regarding Pella's early history, including, um, some of the topics could be arrival of the first Europeans to the area. Uh, what motivated the Dutch to leave the Netherlands? Uh, what did the Pella area look like, and did the Dutch survive? The Tubbles and the Farms, Thomas and Nancy Tubble were the first pioneers to settle in the Pella area, so we could focus a little bit on them. Um, some early history of Pella. The history of Sunken Gardens Park itself, which was originally called Tulip Town. And the historic impact of the early Dutch in Pella's present-day culture and architecture. So as, as it stands, the, uh, walkway would begin at the Tubble Cabin and end at Sunken Gardens Park. And, uh, we have a map in the next slide, but the entryway would be just to the, uh, west side of the Tubble Cabin and would come out, it's a little bit hard to see, but just right at this big tree. So it's kind of in the center of Sunken Gardens Park. And it would pick, pick connect up to this sidewalk which loops around the park. So this is an aerial view. Uh, the Tubble Cabin is down here at the bottom. This is Lincoln Street runs along the bottom. Main Street is over here, Lincoln School here, Sunken Gardens Park here. And so this is the existing city-owned alleyway, which right now is just sitting there. And so, uh, what we would propose is to run a walkway from Tubble Cabin to Sunken Gardens. So Bob's gonna take over, I think, and, uh, talk a little bit about some of the benefits and...
They're gonna go with Maxim Moe.
Right, with Maxim Moe.
Yeah, I, I think we're kind of excited about the Tubble Cabin itself. Uh, it really is, it is the building where Scolti came in and did the original landmine. So the Tubble Farm, both, we're not exactly sure how many acres, but the acreage that, that they bought at the time was a big part of central Pella. So things like the Central Park and the areas to the north of that were owned by the Tubbles. They had, uh, settled that before the Dutch got here. But our organization and our constituents think there's a lot of value in recognizing our Dutch heritage and taking advantage of the architecture or some other things. Because of this particular learning walk and the history of that immediate area, we think it's a great place to start. We think it could be entertaining. There's a couple already very popular, well, one very popular and one emerging popular site there. The Tubble Cabin is emerging, uh, since Historic Pella Trust took ownership of that, it's become really quite a, a popular, uh, I guess tourist spot, approaching a tourist spot. We have a lot to do yet in terms of signage. The links out to Sunken Garden, obviously, at events like Tulip Town, that's one of the most popular spots in town. So we think it could add some, uh, value as a tourist attraction. And I think also some, you know, attribute really to our Dutch heritage. I mean, the, the Dutch came here, they left the Netherlands not because they were poor and impoverished, but they, they left because of principle, and they brought a lot of good value. And many of us of Dutch heritage, we continue to enjoy that, that background. So our organization itself, we're, we're the other historical organization in town. Ninety percent of people think we're just part of this, the historical society. Well, we really are sort of an substitute of them that, uh, we're now over twenty years old. Our budget last year was something in the range of fifty thousand dollars. So we have a little bit of wherewithal, and certainly some continuity and, and some strength there. We're dedicated really to preserving some of the heritage through important architecture. Our, our members and constituents, right now, we have almost two hundred members. But we think there's some value in, in keeping the property around where the people that built it, the laborers that built the property, were speaking Dutch. So it's, it's not an exact criteria, but it's a rough criteria of how we decide what are important buildings. Uh, and so we've been an active, uh, partner in the community of preserving, protecting, and restoring, uh, selected properties. Some we save. So we have an example here, the Little House on, uh... So we have an example here, the little house on Washington and now Mary and White owns it, she's in the process of converting to a bed and breakfast. The Soul Sleeper Church, which is just to the west of US Bank, now operates as a bookstore. The Sybil Treasures is at the west end of the alley that goes just to the south, like the post office is on West Spur Street. We've got the little stonehouse just west of the water plant. So those are areas that we've sort of, several of those properties we own, others we just simply maintain them, and most of the properties, once we own them, when we sell them or move them on, are a protective covenant, so that prevents the new owners from tearing them down. So the most recent acquisition we have is the Tubble Cabin to Lincoln Street, and really forms the heart of what we're trying to do. We've also been working with the city on creating a historic district. So a separate topic, but it is an area that we, our organization, organization is really trying to collaborate with the city, with the staff here, and with the community at At the Tubble Cabin, for us, it's an opportunity to let people appreciate some of our history. And one of the very first things we started doing was educating all the town's secondgraders. So the secondgraders, whether they're in the public school, or Christian schools, or home schools, we send a general invitation at the end of April or early May, just prior to Tulutown, to come through, and we set on a several hour session where they go through some of the early pioneers, and this is an example, one of the thank you notes. One of our distinguished councilpeople here actually has personally participated in some of the training. So, there you go. Is that you in the picture?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, it's the other blonde bombshell woman? So, but anyway, that's an important part, and so every year we bring in the fresh secondgraders, so all the way through there, we sort of keep that process going. So, the outline that we have is making sort of a primitive walkway down there. We do have one landscape architecture proposal with an estimated budget of about $85,000. We're estimating from that that the total project cost is going to be somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000. We already have a grant of $20,000 from Midwest One Bank, and they gave it to us a general for educational purposes. I know they would be delighted to apply to this project. And really, sort of depending on getting an agreement with the city and how to go forward with it, we believe, and at this point, we've started just a little bit of dabbling in the area of fundraising, we think it's gonna be a relatively easy project to raise a substantial amount of money from local philanthropists and foundations. So what we're interested in, and what we're asking for from the city council, is to reach an agreement of some way where we can have an operating agreement for that alleyway. Our hope is that we would have an agreement, so it almost would be treated like an extension of the Sunken Garden Park. So for maintenance and so on, it would be an extension of that maintenance work that goes on there. We would, in terms of the volunteering and fundraising, we've committed to raise a substantial part of the funds, and quite honestly, we might be able to exceed that by a substantial degree. But until we knew where we sat with the city and their enthusiasm for moving forward the project, we were a little bit hesitant too, and maybe a little too hesitant, but we wanted to at least understand what our basis was for going forward. We also believe it's an opportunity where we can get a lot of volunteer help everywhere, from, we've had, around the Tubble Cabin, we have the Garden Club has been involved, we have a number of volunteers, both members of Historic Pellet Trust as well as general volunteers, that help run the education program, help do some of the landscaping and the maintenance around the cabin. The other part, we own that cabin, we've owned it for about three years now, and so depending on how this thing unfolds, we could actually make sure that there's a seamless transition between that alleyway and the cabin itself, and take advantage of its history. So the steps that we see going forward, one is to have an agreement between the city and Historic Pellet Trust that this is a project that makes sense, and go ahead with actually getting a more detailed proposal fit together by either an architectural firm or a landscape firm, the city's choosing. We would like to work with that design firm and participate in exactly what the content would be of that, not only of the nature and structure of the foliage and so forth that we put along, the way we think the landscape details itself could easily fit into the historical, so that these would be traditional, long-term, long ago, traditional landscape plants and so on. We would participate in the fundraising, and our hope is, at the end of this, we would have an operating agreement between the City of Pellet and Historic Pellet Trust. So with that, this is particularly of our, the problem is called Tulutown, yeah, in this area. And also, among the histories there, this is at the cooling pond for the original Pellet life plant, and this is probably a 19, late 40s, early 50s postcard. Bruce has a way of coming up with these old pictures, and this is one, so you can see people in the back of the area where they're wearing suit jackets as they tour the local park. So, with that, any questions?
I have one. In our notes, it talks about possible $40,000 contribution.
From our, from our organization, yes.
That doesn't include your grant, right? So that would be in addition to the $20,000?
That particular one, that did include the grant.
Okay, okay, this one, be clear on that, okay.
Danny, our, what do we got for easements in there?
Little 16-foot, what we call Paper Alley, because it's really not being used. I don't, is there any easements in there at all?
Isn't there a phone back there?
I think there's a phone line. Possibly MediaCom. I don't think we're back there.
What's that?
I don't think electric's back, back line back there.
No, I think there's a phone, or that, or MediaCom, or something runs through there.
Yeah, there's a couple little short towers back along that alleyway.
So is your intent that the trust owns that property then?
I mean, we're willing to, we're not eager to own it, we would, our preference would probably be that the city continues to own it, we would help build it, and we'd volunteer for it.
I thought I saw that in one of your points, that you would want to continue from the trust down, and then having a maintenance agreement with the city.
No, I, we're willing to do it either way, Bruce. To me, personally, it makes better sense for the city to maintain ownership and just treat it as an extension of the park. But if it works better for the city, I mean, we're not going into a lot of preconceived notions, other than we think it's a good idea, and we're willing to help sponsor it with money and volunteer activity.
Danny, is that alleyway clearly defined from a legal standpoint?
Sure, absolutely. It's the original flat, I believe it was 16-foot. You know, I think the only...
So there's really no question that's gonna potentially cause an issue later down the road, as far as, you planted a tree in my backyard, now it's your problem, kind of thing?
I guess I have a walk reason, there could easily be trees and sheds in it today, and I believe there probably are.
I don't know that there's a shed. I did walk it, this was some time back, but I think there is some foliage in there, yes.
The only, this has been discussed over the last year or two. The one issue we've seen, past policy of the city was, if there was no desire for it to be an alley, citizens came to us, and it was offered to, you know, half of the alley was offered to each adjacent property. So in this case, if we're not keeping it, past policy would have been to divide it up evenly, or at least offer it, instead of giving it to just the trust, which is a third, you know, a third party, uninterested party at this present time.
Oh, we're interested.
Has anyone talked to any of those homeowners along there?
We've talked, we have visited, we have all of them except one, I think, and there was a woman, too, that's in late life. So we have visited with the neighbors. They ranged, the opinion of it, some very enthusiastic, there was one widow lady that wasn't sure she wanted people going through her backyard, but quite honestly, she, I guess the longer we talked to her, she...
She came around.
Well, that may be a bit of a strong word, but she's, she's not, she's certainly not pushing back to the level that first she did, but I, and understandable, and our belief is a walkway like that would be limited use only to daylight hours, and that's one of the things we've discussed about if we can. We don't, you know, we talked at one point, maybe lighting would make sense, but said that would encourage nighttime use, and we thought there'd be value in not doing that.
Danny, do you see any maintenance issues with a walking trail back in there? How difficult would that be to maintain?
Public Works does, but I think Parks would be taking care of this one.
Janette, okay, well...
Always that friction there.
That wall right over here, did you see that?
Well, since that's the old power plant pond, that's actually a...
I think we all got a hot hand in this, don't we? Is there any police contingent?
No. You know, I mean, I think, you know, from a staffing standpoint, I mean, obviously, we like parks, that's what we do, quality of life, but when you start talking about all these other projects that are coming up, I think we're at a point where, you know, we might be at our point of what we can do with existing staff, so if we start to add more parks or facilities that we need to maintain, that would also have to be part of the discussion.
That's a, that's a great point, Janette, because as we're, just to put it out there, I should have said this at the very beginning, and that is, the pie is only so big, and we have to divide this pie up to a lot of different people that are asking for a lot of different things, and part of the things that we have to divide it up in is staff time and efforts and all of the commitments that we have to make to represent the city, to do what we can do for the most of our citizens, and hopefully that'll get us through to the next project, but at some point, you just can't do anymore. So, that being said, that's not what I'm saying for this particular project, but just in general terms, there does come a time where you just have to say...
We're all taxpayers here, Mayor.
As Mayor, I want to thank Janette for bringing that up. We are coming into the budget, and, you know, we have to weigh which projects we feel are worthwhile, and if they're worthwhile, well then we gotta come up with some funding, and we have to keep in mind that I think we got a pretty good stay.
You know, I, I know we're talking about that hotel motel tax money piece, right, but to me, this is one of those projects that, when you look at the visibility that this park has, and the significance it plays in town, and just in the last six months, the amount of times I've read something about the Tubble Cabin, and how you can tie that into the park and make that experience a whole lot better, this might be one of those projects that legitimately could take some other funds from something else, just to make it come together if we thought it was, you know, high enough upon the priority list.
Well, the nice part of it is, is quite frankly, we're not asking for any money. We're wanting to operate in agreement for maintenance. That's what my question is for...
Yeah, right.
Is for maintenance. I think for budget, I think a lot...
I think there's plenty of funding money out there. I guess the way, my first blush at it is that we would own the property, you come up with the funds to put it in, and we'll maintain it. But, I mean, that's, that's just the way it...
And that feels, you know, to me, that feels like a reasonable challenge to us, you know, my guess, you know, we're mowing the Tubble Cabin, we could probably mow the alleyway too.
Right. Janette, did you get that down?
Because the city has a lot better mower than we do.
We gotta buy the gas for his mower, did you hear that word?
Dear Bob, I want to challenge you. I really like the project, but of course I would. But the other piece that I want to challenge you with is, a lot of times when you're writing a grant, the individuals who are queeping the money want opportunities for their employees to volunteer, and this would be just such a unique and wonderful natural step for you to do in a grant. And I believe, just off the top of my head, Midwest One is one of them. When you defend your grant, and why you should have this grant, you should say 15 people a year could help maintain. Central College constantly looking for ways to put their students to work. So to me, this project, it encompasses everything that I believe our community stands for. It's got history, it has the funding opportunity, it's already launching its own funding, and it has the ability for people to be involved in a hands-on way.
Sure, promoting the whole volunteer...
Exactly. We're just saying, let's go, let's go pull weeds along the learning walk. So I think that that would be my challenge to you, and also if the city had a bit of a reprieve, you know, to say, you mow it, but we'll weed it. Just take a bit of that on, give that back to the very people that are asking for funding.
That's a good point.
It's a great project.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
And as we listen to these, it reminds me, two or three years ago, in a session, they kind of sat up and said, you know what, this is all the life stuff is taking up a bigger part of the budget every year, and it isn't gonna change.
Thank you very much. My name is Doug Bokeen, I'm from St. Mary's Catholic Church. Along with these group of individuals over here, I want to thank you very much for taking the time to listen to us and what we're trying to accomplish.
Far right side.
Far right side. Okay, this is, of course, St. Mary's Church out on 218th Place. Just a little bit of history involved here. The first church up on the left-hand side was a mission church, approximately six families. That church, by the way, was located on Central Campus. Some of you may remember where it was located. It was located about right where the cafeteria is now. And in 1970s, some of these individuals, Julio and Zach, was instrumental in swapping properties, and with the premier roll screen explosion and development and all those, bringing people into the community, it became necessary for the church to expand, and the church was built over on P Street in approximately 1978. At that time, in 1978, there were approximately 60 families, that did not include the 150 to 300 students from the college. By 1982, the church had expanded to 145 families, and has continued to grow right in, along with the industry development in the community. In 2009, this facility was actually started in the late 1998, where we purchased property, and we'll show you a map of that. Was, this particular facility was dedicated in 2009. Presently, we have over 300 families plus that attend the church. Now, this gives you an idea of where we are located, and this has a...
I think it's right in the center.
So, what did I do? St. Mary's Catholic Church, this is 218th. Some of you may know who lives there, some of you may not. But this is where the church is located at this time. To the north is Big Rock Park. So, this 36 acres of property edges right up to the back of Big Rock Park. This is a picture of the property as it was beginning to be developed in the fall, dedication time, where the land was getting leveled off, et cetera. Again, Big Rock Park up in this area, 218th, and by the way, right through this area is an easement, I believe it is for Elm Street. If there is ever an extension of Elm Street, there is an easement right through here. So approximately 36 acres, again, right next to Big Rock Park. I know when we built the church, we had communication with Big Rock, the Park Commission, whoever's in charge of that, they were concerned about development at that time. We have converted the majority of the property into CRP, with a walking trail that is used by quite a few people in the community as an opportunity, an extension of Big Rock Park. Now, our problem comes here, city and county boundaries. Again, the road, 218th, the church, the location. The orange, or purple here, represents the city boundaries. As you can see, part of the road is county, part of the road is city. Our councilman here is in the city, his business is in the county. We are, our back door at the church is in the city, plus this portion is in the city, the rest... The rest is in the county. Across the street, uh, city, down here, county. So we, we've had communications and discussion with both the city now and letters, and as well with the, um, county. HMA, we have a look that up. Anybody know what that means? Hot, mixed asphalt, hot mixed asphalt. We had to find that out. Washington looking north. There is approximately, I'm going to guess, two hundred plus feet of asphalt in that place right now that was put in when I asked Chuck Vander Plu, how many years ago? He couldn't even tell me. So I'm not sure if there's been any other additional maintenance on that in the last twenty years, but approximately two hundred feet of asphalt. This is looking from our driveway at the facility, south towards Washington, and that curve, if we go back here, uh, this is that curve. This is where you're looking at where this particular picture is taken. Now, in two thousand seventeen specifically, we've been working on this, trying to find all the rules and regulations. We started, uh, this process, according to the county, the code, three eleven of Iowa code, we contacted all the property owners to see if there was any discussion, any, uh, problems, any reason for that. We talked about, in this documentation that we presented to the city and the county, we talked about reasons for surfing, resurf, or surfacing the road. We talked about the fact that St. Mary's would be willing to commit a substantial amount of money toward this project. Marion County has completed design criteria and an estimated cost of approximately six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, including, that includes a twenty percent contingency fund. I have a full breakdown. Mike, do you happen to have that from the county?
Not, not on me.
Okay.
I have it as well, so...
I have a copy also, if, if they're interested. But we're talking approximately, uh, twenty-four hundred feet on a twenty-two-foot, um, roadway. Reasons for the surface, reasons why we think this is a worthwhile community project. Not a St. Mary's project, but a community project. First of all, safety, a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic, and it continues to get more and more. And I'm not even including the Central College cross-country team that uses that road for running. But we're looking at safety. Dust control is an issue. Dust control is an issue on any gravel road. But when we have this much traffic close to town, and when we have to need fog lights in the middle of the day, if there's not a good breeze, the danger increases, the safety. Now, we might say, well, let's put a calcium chloride or whatever they put on the road now to control the dust. This is what happens when we start putting dust control on the road and not paving. Maintenance, you can't grade it. You do, you lose all the dust control. So, uh, and you can see the potholes develop very, very quickly. So safety is a significant issue. We believe road maintenance will be decreased. Simply that the grader doesn't have to go up and down the road, we don't have to, um, put gravel down there. We, we think in the long run, it will reduce maintenance. So, reasons, increased traffic flow, again, the number of people that are attending services, regular weekday services, and this doesn't even include the, uh, the businesses on the road already and the other residents that live there. Special services. Couple of weeks ago, we had the misfortune of having one of our young parishioners pass away. We had well over a thousand people out over there on that road over two days. Yes, it, it takes a toll on that road. Educational programs, every Sunday and Wednesday evenings, putting a lot of young people on the roads. Young people on the road. Yeah, they're supposed to know how to drive, but as you know, um, the road's been pretty good for making donuts if you grade it, so... But all of these events, high volume of traffic, high opportunity for mishaps. And that doesn't even include, again, the, all the deer that Bruce raises about that. Similarly to the seventies and nineties, when we, our particular church and many churches in the community faced rapid expansion, the increase in business and manufacturing have resulted in many, many new residents coming into the community. You've been introduced to many things tonight as to why people move to Pellet and why things they need, dog parks, walking paths. One of the things that people come to is the opportunity and the freedom to worship as they eat. And the, the, the opportunity for communities to, uh, come in and see, um, well-placed churches makes a difference when recruitment is happening and keeping good people. We know the city has made significant strides to address the needs of its current citizens by attracting new and productive citizens. The, the sports complex. We already know that road upgrades, including the, uh, working with Marion County is not a, something new because it was done, by the way, that's a, I don't know, Business One Sixty-three and adjacent roads. The, the, the city has and Marion County have overcome their differences and worked together. So, the unique challenge that we currently have is obviously Marion County and the city of Pellet. We've already, the, the city has already demonstrated their willingness to work with, with the community. St. Mary's has, um, designated a significant financial contribution to this project. We, when we, the project was first built, we did put, invested in gas and water lines that potentially could aid future development in this area. We believe that, uh, paved roads certainly would, uh, entice some type of, uh, development in that area. We've created this, uh, buffer zone that will help, uh, and help maintain the, uh, Big Rock Park. So, we believe that, uh, surfacing would benefit the community in, in many ways. Certainly attracting and maintaining citizens, potential development, and one of our biggest concerns is safety. Safety for residents out there, safety for the young people that drive. And, um, uh, we think it would go a long way in, in correcting that. You also have a copy of this, uh, letter that was sent to the city earlier in October, in many ways addressing these questions. So, that's where we're at. Mike does have a breakdown of the, uh, county project, which broke down exactly, um, cost per paving, if there's any grading, uh, all of those things. And, uh, certainly can share that with you. One thing, I need to make sure I talk about that. This project, and is part of the comprehensive plan. Julio knows all about the comprehensive plan, and he told me. The comprehensive plan and, again, the easement, if part of the comprehensive plan includes Elm Street extension. That, that's already in, in our facility, in our position. Questions for myself or Father?
Yeah, I can just say that in two and a half years that I've been pastor at St. Mary's, we've been called by industry and others from time to time to, uh, receive persons who they're interested in recruiting and showing the church to them, giving them some words of welcome on not only to the city of Pellet, but also to the parish of St. Mary, if they would be fortunate enough to, uh, gain a position in industry or business in our area. So I think we are part of that network that brings people into the community who are valued by the industries and businesses, uh, already present, uh, in our community. We mentioned the safety regarding, uh, young drivers, but I think it's also for our older drivers to come along and find that you can't see more than half a car length in front of your vehicle as you are proceeding down, out of the road. And we think we are caught in a, uh, in, in between state because to control the dust destroys the road, uh, so what do you do? And it seems to me you have to do a more permanent road fix, uh, which is paving. And we're certainly willing to engage that cost. And I think we were talking of, of amounts of a quarter of a million dollars. Now, if that amount moves to a million dollars, you may well be on our, uh, passing basket, uh, to assist, uh, that work. But we're not holding back from, uh, wanting to be a viable and, and good faith partner, uh, in this work. But it is something we certainly can't do on our own, and we all understand that. But the people who are members of our congregation are citizens of the community and citizens of the county, and, uh, what benefits their taxes, uh, should be offering them is probably, uh, also in consideration here. And again, the volume of traffic may not be substantial all the time, but it is substantial when something happens, so you have a number of vehicles coming. Can underline that for educational and faith formation programs, but also the wedding, the funeral, and the normal, uh, Sunday services. I would attest to that, but at times, I'm having a tough one.
I, I do want to, uh, mention the police chief. If we have an alarm out there, the local city police and the county both respond. So we greatly, greatly appreciate their, uh, quick response when, uh, somebody forgets to shut the alarm off or something like that when we're going in. Questions?
Not really a question, but more of a comment to, to these folks. So, as I don't need to remind you, the, the Two Hundred and Eighteenth kneel drive, uh, scenario is, in some folks' minds, just as important as this one. For many of the very reasons that you pointed out here. There are kids that, that are riding their bicycles to that development, past the, the soccer fields now, on a road that is, on some days, Level B quality. And, and there's been comments made to those folks, well, you knew you were living on a gravel road when you moved there. I don't think that's a very good, uh, explanation of why we should or shouldn't do something, but wha- whatever we do here, we better be prepared to do there. Because, uh, there's, you know, I don't know how many homes in that development now, but it's full. And then you throw in the Pellet corporers that choose to come through there, um, at pretty high rates of speed. On New Year's Eve, there was a car in my front yard because they missed the corner because of the, the quality of that road in winter conditions. You actually know the, the guy, Meridin. But, um, so, so I, I, I'm on board with what needs to be done here. I just want to remind us that whatever we do here, um, is setting an expectation for how we will handle the other road that's about sixty percent in city limits and, and shared with the county. And it's a mess, just like this scenario is here, but, um, this is a tough one because it's going to cost a bunch of money, and I appreciate the contributions that you're willing to make. But, but I don't think the contributions should outweigh the, the safety items that are, are at the top of the list in both of these projects.
I don't think anybody, any of us on this side of the table will debate that that needs to be done in that Two Hundred and Eighteenth.
I just want to stick up for them because they've, they've been quite vocal and I...
That's well said, Tony. I, because I think you're, um, we do set a precedent when we make a decision based upon, um, updating gravel roads or, or whatever, especially when it's not fully in the city limits. I mean, therein lies the road. I mean, honestly, that's, that is a big sticking point of why in the world would I spend four hundred thousand dollars to put, resurface a county road?
Well...
I, I get the...
We are hoping that the county will also...
That last word on there is the biggest word on that whole sheet for me, is I am adamantly, uh, supportive of public safety issues. So, um, that being said, I would still have my phone ring quite often saying, why would I do that?
That I understand.
We understand.
I, I think we have an issue here, and we've talked about this before, Diddy, you know? I agree a hundred percent, um, on full curb, two standards out to there. I really do. I think Brook Circle needs to go in, the city limits. Out there, I guess what we got, I don't, I don't see the traffic volume, um, meriting full curb and gutter out there on the Two Hundred and Eighteenth Place. Plus it, I think it'd be significant. But when you look at a bituminous, and I know you don't like that, I know that's a four-letter word to you. But, um, I, I don't know. I, I have to be, to, uh, address the white elephant in the room. I really don't care if it's paved or not, myself personally. It's not that big a deal to me. I understand where the church is coming from, so that I really feel that, you know, there's skin in the game. I just don't see us doing a full curb and gutter. And that's, that's where I think you feel that there should be, and I don't. Then it isn't going to happen.
Is the six sixty-eight, is that curb and gutter, or is that just...
That's asphalt.
That's just the hot mix. Hot mix and oil there, right? Or hot mix?
Yep.
What a hot...
HMA.
A hot mix asphalt.
And I, I think that's probably where we're at in this. I don't know that anybody debates.
That, that's fifteen-year road and the curb and gutter, the concrete's a fifty, with minimal maintenance. The asphalt road at fifteen took high maintenance.
Yeah, I know. So I...
I'm sorry.
Six inches.
Six inches. And what was it that we put out there, Pellet Christian?
That was six.
That was six?
And it's got serious issues.
But that was, there was a moisture issue underneath that road before we ever put it down, too, and we do that.
Well, as in most ground roads...
I was going to say, there's, yeah. That's, that's no matter where you're at.
Eagle Lane, Water Table is right, it's like four feet.
It's right there in that corner. Because we had to upgrade, uh, the drainage under that, uh, corner in order to even get it down, right?
To Bruce's point, though, on, on the kneel drive piece, that's, it's either six or eight inches. I think they put extra, it was thicker there. And other than at the very end where the, the maintainer that comes through twice a month tears it up, there has been zero maintenance needed to do on that pavement. It's held up extremely well, so I think...
That was, that was put in for, for the soccer complex, if I remember right, right?
Been a long time.
We had twelve to fifteen years ago.
Yeah, yeah. That's the problem with rural section roads, if, if you don't go to urban before the development gets there, you have all these other issues that we're going to deal with here in just a little bit on premier trail. That's your problem. Because now you haven't dealt with drainage, and you don't have sidewalks and trails or tree line, you've got ditches.
Well, I don't know that it's a permanent fix, and I just don't see us waiting fifteen years to come up with... I can see us waiting fifteen years to come up with curb and gutter on Two Hundred and Eighteenth Place. I, I'm just projecting, I, I look at the development that's headed out there. So in the meantime, do we have to put up with, because it does, there's times where there's, when there's not breeze, it just kind of works its way down that belly and it just hangs there. There's a lot of that. It's the nature of a gravel road.
Have we approached any of those, rest of those property owners about voluntarily annexing?
To my knowledge...
Diddy, have we?
No.
I've had them call me, I've had them in my office, and they're not for the project.
So the answer to that would be is they probably wouldn't voluntarily annex.
I don't know.
We have letters from, I believe, everyone that said they would support the project as long as they won the financial... And, uh, I think the city has a copy, so...
I'm not sure of the unanimous, but... That would all, I guess, uh, you know, at least look at it, because I think the county, I don't know.
The county's already said no, I would think. At the, that was the last word I heard, was they took a vote and said, we did not want to fund that project. Isn't that right?
The county changed their mind because the first proposal was thirty percent the city, thirty percent the county, and forty percent the church. It was okay for him. Then when he went for the vote out there... It was okay for him, but then when he went for the vote up there, he backed off of that and said, no, that money that comes from Pellet is supported for maintenance of farm roads, not for that kind of...
I believe the county is, at this particular time, offering ten or fifteen percent. But we appreciate you looking at it, and please contact any of us if you have any additional questions.
I don't know, you know, just that the city would be willing to say, they'd be willing to talk to the county if that be a help in moving us all together again, or it's going to be that both arms of government aren't interested and we're left alone again. Because that's what we're trying to do, is, I'm, because I really, and being at that meeting in Knoxville, I kind of thought their solution was, you annex everything, we put your road in.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of what I had heard from down the...
Yeah, and like, you know, what's being said here, you weren't going to do that for twenty years.
Right.
And, you know, I think, we think the people of St. Mary's County, as members of the county, members of the city, have a right to be better served than see in twenty years.
Yeah, Denny, if it does, I mean, a bituminous like that for fifteen years, if it, it really, I'm guessing there might have to be a little bit of grading done, but what do you, what do you think the upkeep is on something like that? When I look at some other fifteen years, I just, I don't see us coming up with the funds to put in full curb and gutter.
You still got farm market traffic on the road, so if you get those frost boils started, it isn't like concrete where you got some broken panels and take them out. Now you've got a full-depth asphalt patch, so you always have, you have speed bumps forever, and that's what's going on in Eagle Lane where you stop and start on some of those patches, and it starts alligator cracking apart. You've got nothing, because then you confine itself like concrete.
I'm just looking for a stopgap between...
Yeah, and the 668 is...
These folks are coming up, they, I mean, we've said this before at this table, well, show us the money.
Hey. Yeah, I, yeah. That speaks loud and clear, I get it.
Well, yeah.
And the unfortunate, the unfortunate, the unfortunate is that it wasn't matter whether five years or ten years, but the words of Denny himself, one day he said to me, it'll be thirty years before we do a speed, so in the meantime, what happens? What's the solution? So, the way I look at it, not all the projects that we have to develop for this kind of an operation, whoever's behind is not willing to put the amount that we, we're willing to contribute to help, because for us it's a great, great need, so.
If there was an easy answer, we would have already come up with it already, right?
Yeah.
Well, we're not unsupportive, I will guarantee you that, and I certainly would be more than willing to participate in conversations with the county and see if we can move that a little off-center. And all decisions really are going to be done in February, so...
Sure.
We appreciate the information, and if we can make some more progress on that, on expense sharing between now and February would be, actually, would be very good, so...
I'm sure you know that seventy-five percent of the taxes that go to Knoxville originates from Pellet. And I remember when Vermeer and I, and Stu, we were trying to get the exits for the bypass, how much they fought against us because they want to give us only one. They didn't want to give us, so we presented four, they give us three. So, the county sometimes has to give up, give in to some pressures, and so they got to realize that a lot of the projects, like even the tragedy that did around the square, it was spent with taxpayers, money was paid here in Pellet.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a momentary break for just a moment, so then wait for... Very good, we will move on to Page one, Resolution Number 5827, entitled Resolution Acceptance Change Order Number One, Final Quantity Adjustment Authorizing Final Payment to Castrogen Inc., and the Acceptance and Final Completion of the West Substation feeder egress project. Mike, can you explain, please?
Mr. Mayor, if you have, if you'd like to further want some attention to the Bay Board for the recent replacement of the site, and as the mayor said earlier this evening, this change order number one for the West Substation feeder egress project, now as background on this, this project did involve installing three additional 12,500 volt electrical underground feeder lines for the West Substation, which we have pictured up on the Bay Board to various interconnections within our electrical distribution system. This would be the substation, in case you're not familiar, that's on West Washington Street and it affects the city's diesel generation plant. Overall, the purpose of these new lines would be to increase reliability and add redundancy on the electrical distribution system. Let's go ahead, please, Corey.
As the mayor frequently stated, the adjustment we're talking about tonight is just simply a reconciliation from what the contract we did originally for materials for the project and what was actually placed in the ground. In this case, the quantity adjustment would decrease with an amount of $1,005.87. As background on this, we certain are often from original construction contract, $231,000 to $210,000. Council proves this change order this evening, the revised final contract amount would be $230,000 to $240,000 to $13 cents. It's important to note the engineer on the project, the EGR, they are recommending acceptance of the project as they believe it was completed in accordance with the best indication of the project. Both of them, Mr. Mayor, if you'd use our presentation, if you want to have the engineering side, if the mayor comes to me and have an inside of...
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval? Steve Vought, support. Sport Bakovin, discussion?
All three feeders fired up and...
All the cables spliced, it's not terminated in the substation yet, we've got to take some outages and replace some switches with the four-way switches, but we'll get that coordinated here in the spring and get them all fired up.
Is everything done in the substation?
Everything except for the terminations, the cables all pulled in and everything spliced all the way out to the switches.
Yeah, that's the feeders, how about in the station itself?
Oh, as far as the substation project?
As far as the ring was.
Yeah, that's all done. We've just got some...
I like the way we do, just a quick comment, but I like the way we do it in that what really matters, our guys are doing.
Yeah.
The conduits in, so we got a good system.
I think so.
I think so, too.
Any other questions or comments? Tony, I know how much you hate change orders...
I love it, it'd be great. Way to go, Nick, good job.
Assuming this is okay.
Why that to his rate?
I just couldn't let that pass.
I appreciate that, that's good. Appreciate it.
Seeing no comments, all in favor, please say yes opposed, no, clerk, call a roll.
Steve Vought, Bakovin, Rander Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Item number two, Resolution Number 5828, titled Resolution Navigating the Depositories. Mike, can you explain?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the annual event for the City of Pellet, the Ohio Code, the city that are required to accrue financial institutions for public funds deposited. The resolution approves the following list that we have up here on the Bay Board of Financial Institutions for the City Will Deposit Public Funds Act. Also maintains deposit levels of $25 million dollars of each institution. With that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So move.
Mr. Stryland, support Peterson, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes opposed, no, clerk, call a roll.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Rander Horst?
Yes.
Steve Vought?
Yes.
Motion carried on. The number three, Resolution Number 5829, entitled Resolution Approving Engineering Services Agreement with Veenstra and Kim Inc. for the North Water Tower Interior Painting Project. Mike, do I hear...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as background on this project, as the mayor stated, this resolution approves an engineering services agreement with Veenstra and Kim for the North Water Tower Interior Painting Project distributed water tower that's located by the Lincoln Elementary School. Important to note that the interior was inspected by, qualified by a firm in 2014, and with this, we have listed up the scope of services for the project up here on the Bay Board. Let's go ahead, please, Corey. Now, as far as the total estimated fees that we have, they will not exceed contract amount of $17,800. It's important to note that the project is expected to accrue during the 2018 construction season, and at this time, based on our preliminary estimates, we believe the project has to be right around $200,000. Considering this matter, we believe the engineering fees are reasonable in terms of the complexity of the project for a water tower painting project. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, our recommendation is to approve the contract this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So move.
Steve Vought, support for Bakovin, discussion?
When was the last time I got painted, Denny, you know?
Well, we, I can't tell on the inside, it's been many years. We painted X tiers, six, seven years ago. It's got some mildew and mold eye, everybody's looked at it, believes we can fresh wash it off, so with this contract, we're going to wash it outside. It'll be an early spring or fall project, avoid midsummer, so.
Yeah.
And this includes them claiming and inspecting the tower, and that, that tower is kind of a nightmare to find, you have to go horizontal before you go up through a little tube. We've got a couple guys about throwing the tube.
That's a nice way of putting it, Denny.
Yeah, it's a little snug.
Our ladder truck, I power washed the outside of that thing and nothing flat, so there you go.
Could be practice for the fire department, just get up there and spray it up. All right, very good, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes opposed, no, clerk, call a roll.
Steve Vought?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Rander Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Rander Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Motion carried on. On to claims, Abstract of Bill Number 1998, do I hear motion for approval?
Move to approve an issue warrant.
Move to approve an issue warrant by Steve Vought? Support? By Peterson?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes opposed, no, clerk, call a roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Steve Vought?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Rander Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Motion carried on. Move on to other business, public forum. Any council members have any business that needs to be addressed at this point? Any members of the audience have any issues that they would like to bring before the council at this time? Seeing none, do I hear motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion to adjourn by Bakovin, support of Mr. Stryland? All in favor, please say yes opposed, no, clerk, call a roll.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Steve Vought?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Rander Horst?
Yes.
Motion carried on to claims, Abstract of Bill Number 1998, do I hear motion for approval?
Move to approve an issue warrant.
Move to approve an issue warrant by Steve Vought? Support?
By...
Peterson?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes opposed, no, clerk, call a roll.
Steve Vought?
Peterson?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Rander Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Motion carried on. Move on to other business, public forum. Any council members have any business that needs to be addressed at this point? Any members of the audience have any issues that they would like to bring before the council at this time? Seeing none, do I hear motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion to adjourn by Bakovin, support of Mr. Stryland? All in favor, please say yes opposed, no, clerk, call a roll.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Steve Vought?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
DeYoung?